We'll call our meeting to order. First item is invocation. We're scheduled to have Pastor Charlie Hale here, and I don't think I see him. In that case, we'll ask Jack Smith to do the invocation. Jack? And then following that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. We're going to ask Jake Jackson to lead us in that.
A night full of surprises.
Would you join me in prayer, please? Heavenly Father, we give thanks for all that we have received. Our great town councils laid deliberate this evening. Please give them guidance and strength and understanding, and the will of the people shall be theirs. We thank you for our police force, our firefighters, our emergency responders. Please keep them safe, keep them under your wings, so they may do your duty. In all this, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Supervisor Smith. Jake?
Please join me with a further pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Jake. Next item is a roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skug.
President?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory is excused this evening, absent. Councilmember Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Rooney?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you Diane. Proclamations, Park and Recreation Month. Diane, do you have the proclamation? Come on up Elaine. It's real good to see you.
Parks and Recreation Month, July 2017. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the town of Prescott Valley, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all of our citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation service for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all of our citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and natural resources improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and national recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the town of Prescott Valley recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore I Harvey Skug, Mayor of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim and recognize the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Prescott Valley, and call upon park and recreation supporters to join us in recognizing the importance of our nation's parks and recreational facilities, and encourage all citizens to enjoy all the recreation activities available in their community.
Thank you Diane. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Sure do. We're sure very proud of our Parks and Recreation Department and the staff and our Parks and Recreation Commission for everything they do to keep us, keep our parks so beautiful. They do a wonderful job. You all do a wonderful job, and we're really proud to have you up here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. I'll try not to run over him, Skug. In behalf, most importantly of all, the people of Prescott Valley, and also the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Arts and Culture Commission, our very dedicated and capable Director Brian Whitty, and all the staff, I'm delighted to accept this proclamation and be assured, all the beautiful 20-plus parks in the town will continue to look just as gorgeous as they do today. Thank you very much.
Well, the Parks Department and Public Works have done a great job, and we really appreciate that. Thank you for your service. By the way, for the audience, Elaine Follman has been working for the town for years, and her husband also before that for many years. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you. Next, we have a very special one also. Scheduled announcement and presentation, Sergeant Jake Jackson, retirement. Chief?
Thank you Mayor and Council for this opportunity to recognize a great man, a contribution that he made to a town and our safety, and the contribution that his family made behind him. Jake, if you can join me up here. Jacob Jackson began his police career for the Bisbee Police Department in May of 1995, when he attended the Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy in Tucson, Arizona. Jake graduated the Police Academy as part of Class 187, and worked for Bisbee Police Department in patrol, bicycle patrol, special events, narcotics investigation, and drug interdiction details. While in Bisbee Jake attended training in interview, death investigation, and critical incident response. Jake eventually relocated to Prescott Valley and began his career here in November of 1999. Jake was certified as a physical fitness instructor in 2001, and was appointed as the department's physical fitness coordinator for the agency. He administered annual fitness evaluations for every sworn member of the agency, and helped them with fitness programs for eight years. Jake also led that quite a bit by example, as you can see, he's quite a fit man. Jake was promoted to the rank of Master Police Officer in January 2002, and excelled at fostering new programs to promote community policing, including the PVPD Business Watch Program, a police department district newsletter, crime prevention through environmental design, with which he implemented with several local businesses and residents, and many community meetings to help foster better community relationships with the police and public we serve. As a result of work like this, Jake was awarded with the Community Policing Officer of the Year three times, 2004, 2008, and 2010. It's quite an accomplishment. Jake was also a range safety officer, firearms instructor, rifle instructor, and our range master from 2008 to 2013. Through the provision, coordination, and implementation of firearms training and qualifications, Jake ensured that our personnel were prepared. Jake also assisted with the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy, our Police Academy, in firearms instruction and physical fitness for numerous academy classes. Jake also tested and was appointed to the Special Weapons and Tactics Team in 2001, and excelled as a precision marksman, and later was appointed to sniper team leader and SWAT supervisor. During his tenure with the SWAT team, Jake obtained several advanced SWAT certifications, including hazmat certification, high-risk counter-drug operations, National Tactical Officer Team Leader, and National Rifle Association Precision Rifle Instructor certification. Bit of a tongue twister there. Jake also is a certified field training officer, and assisted in the training of numerous new officers and lateral officers within our agency, before he was promoted to the rank of sergeant in November of 2009. Jake is a graduate of the Arizona Leadership Professional Course and FBI Executive Leadership Course. Jake also has many awards that he has received throughout his 22-year career. The Medal of Valor twice for his involvement in police shootings, the Police Star for his role in a dangerous pursuit, Police Chief's Commendation for his investigation into criminal damage cases involving dozens of victims, and successful apprehension of three suspects, Community Policing Officer three times, Expert Shooter Ribbon, and Physical Fitness Excellence Ribbon. Of all of those, Jake counts his greatest accomplishments in his life as his wife Yvette and five children, Joshua, Ethan, Isaiah, Elijah, and Oliver. And I'm surprised you had time for all of that. On a more personal note, some of my fondest memories on the job include Jake. We've worked together throughout our careers in SWAT, in patrol, and training. The one thing that will always impress me about Jake is that he cares very deeply for the men and women of our department and for our community. He also has a great sense of humor, and could always be counted on to make us laugh. There's a few of us that remember his impressions of characters like Fire Marshal Bill and the Love Doctor. Jake is also quite an artist, and excelled at using his cartoon drawing skills to have fun, and sometimes poke fun at his peers and even supervisors. Jake, you will be missed.
Vice Mayor, any comments? Laura?
Kay Giles, who is the Chairman of the Prescott Valley Police Foundation, asked me to read this following statement. Sergeant Jackson, it is with sincere regrets, both personally and as Chairman of the Police Foundation, that I am having to miss your retirement ceremony due to other obligations. Over the past 15 years or so, we have worked together in many situations, as a volunteer with the Trauma Intervention Program and a block watch captain. I have worked numerous calls with you, or worked together on problems in my neighborhood, including some unusually large incidents. It has been great working with you. You are always knowledgeable, helpful, and considerate of the victims or neighborhood concerns. You have been a great resource over the years. You will be missed, and that's emphasized on here. Thank you for all your years of dedicated work, making our community a safer place to live. May God bless you and your family in all that you do in the future. Okay, you noticed I got permission to make my own remarks. Jake was the very first police officer that I became acquainted with, and that was 17 years ago Jake. Look what you did in all that time. We've had many, many, many times together. He was very kind to let me ride along with him on National Night Out, and he never ever the next year when I would want to ride with him say, "Oh no, I think I probably should let someone else ride along." He always tolerated my wanting to be with him. Jake, you're a blessing, and I want to rejoice for you for all the time you're now going to have, that you can devote to your family. It isn't that you weren't devoted to your family, you always have been, but our demands of our community on you to make us all feel safe and comfortable always took time away. I just want you to make the most of it, but I am sad.
Council, Marty?
Jake, as we heard from Deputy Chief Edelstein, the list of accomplishments, we could tell Jake is an underachiever. Actually, he's one of those shiny examples that I'm sure all of our police officers want to achieve and become like him. When I was President of the Police Foundation, back when we still had a president, before we changed it over to a board, and we had chairs, I had many interactions with Jake. Again, the National Night Out and other events that we would have, Jake was always there. He's always had a smile on his face, but he was always diligent in his duties. You will be missed, and congratulations on retiring and getting to it in fine shape, and we look forward to hearing about what you have achieved in your civilian life. So congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you Marty. Mike?
Yeah, well congratulations Jake. You know, I think I always feel bad because once I start learning everybody's names and seeing faces over and over again, we get kind of taken for granted in terms of we always feel you're going to be here. But you're such a young man still, I think that we appreciate the time and effort you've put in, and I think we are all impressed with your resume. I think that's the other thing that really impresses me, is the fact that all of our officers have a resume that's hard to beat. I'd like to kind of compare our officers with other municipalities. I think we just blow them away, and it's just, I think, a testimony to the courage, the education, the training, the motivation, and commitment you have to do your job, and we appreciate that very much. I can see, when I look at you, a little resemblance to Fire Marshal Bill, and I can understand that. And that was one of my favorite characters as well. And you know, I think, I just feel now as we see some of our more mature officers leaving, that that's just the circle of life, I guess, for the Prescott Valley Police Department. And we wish you well in your retirement, and hope to see you around as well. Come and visit us. Congratulations again.
Jody?
Sergeant Jackson, thank you so much for your service to this community, to the investment that you have made here, not just to the citizens, but the investment in the leadership that you've provided to those that you've served alongside, shoulder to shoulder. I can tell that you're not retiring from, but rather you're retiring to this lovely family. You know, I'd have to ask Yvette, what's the first honeydew that you have for him? Thank you Officer.
Rick?
You know Jake, retirement is a bittersweet accomplishment. Having been through it myself, I understand what you're going through, some of what you're going through anyway. But I can tell you that we feel you're leaving Prescott Valley in some really good hands right now, and a lot of that's based on all of your accomplishments over the years. So thank you very much for everything you've done for us.
Mrs. Jackson, you're up next. 20 minutes.
Well, I didn't know I would have to say anything, but I am honored to be married to an amazing man. He is such a dedicated husband and father, and everything he does, he does with honor and integrity. So I am so proud of you, and I love you, and we love our town, we love our police department, and I don't know what else to say, but thank you all.
No, it's the little guy in the back. Come on up here. Comments?
Oh, well, sorry. Dad, it's been a roller coaster of emotions going through my life with you being my father, and I don't know where I would be today without you. And you've made me into the man that I am today, and I wouldn't want anyone else to be my father. Thank you.
Any other officers? Jake, you're welcome to say something in your defense.
Wow. I'm going to try and keep this brief so I don't lose it. What a journey it has been to stand here before you today is a great honor, and I am humbled to be here. I can honestly say that it hasn't always been easy, but nothing valuable in life is easy. My career in law enforcement has taught me so much about life, and about myself, about who I am, and more importantly, what I should value in life, as there are so many great relationships that God has blessed me with. Looking back, that I have worked with some of the greatest people I have ever met, and I think many of them are here tonight. Thank you guys for coming, and ladies for coming. Their compassion, their dedication, their passion to serve their community are second to none. The reason I became an officer is because of someone that inspired me, that took the time to be a real person and showed me that they were human, they weren't a superhero, that they were vulnerable, and they bled, just like everyone else, and they had compassion and emotion, just like everyone else. Thank you Chief Ben Reina for believing in me enough to inspire me to step up and walk a mile in a police officer's shoes. Behind every badge is a person that has a story and the ability to positively influence their people in their community, like I was inspired 23 years ago. Like many officers I knew, I can make a difference to work for positive change in the community on every contact. So tonight, I take with me the fond memories of a good career, and for those times that were difficult, I thank God for sending great people to stand with me in order to return home safely at the end of my day. If you've ever been involved in a critical incident with me, please raise your hand and stand and be recognized as a supporting officer. Thank you guys for making sure I got home at the end of my shift safely. Thank you. You are a blessing to me more than you know. Every time things got difficult in my career, alls I had to do is look around me, and I would see the best people, the best squads, the best resources, and they made it easy for me to make the right decision. Thank you. So one last thing I would like to do tonight. I have a tradition on my squad. I'm kind of notorious for it. It's called the game ball. And if you're familiar with any kind of major league sports, they have a ball that is usually presented to the MVP, Most Valuable Player. What we did on my squad is... This is the game ball. You'll notice it has been autographed with names of officers throughout my career when they did an outstanding job on a community policing contact that embodied the spirit of community policing in Prescott Valley Police Department, or they went that extra mile and were diligent in their efforts in tracking down a suspect that took a lot of work, or it might have been something simple where they purchased groceries and diapers for a family in need that was transient. It's all recorded here on this game ball. Excellence is signed all over this ball with their names and their badge numbers. Tonight, I wanted to recognize a home team that has helped me to get to this point. My family, for all those times I was too late to tuck you in, or miss that game, or play, or needed some alone time, for all the difficulties you have endured, thank you for your sacrifice and sharing me with others when it was most important. Thank you. This game ball goes to you, the Jackson family. Tonight, I'll leave you with this. Keep fighting the good fight, and remember, whatsoever ye do, do it heartily as to the Lord and not unto men, as it's recorded in Colossians 3:23. Thank you, and may the Lord bless and keep this community safe.
A few gifts to celebrate Jake's career and his retirement include a shadow box that's put together by one of our volunteers. I think the tradition started with Sergeant Postle, who's in attendance tonight, and then after his retirement, our volunteers have taken over that duty, so it's, I think, quite a memento, and thanks to our volunteers for putting that together. A plaque for Jake in appreciation for all your years of service and dedication to the Prescott Valley Police Department and the town of Prescott Valley, 1999 through 2017. And last but not least, Jake, your retirement badge.
Jake, thank you again for your years of service, and congratulations. Congratulate your beautiful family, your wife and children. What a great family. Enjoy years and years of retirement. Anything else Chief? I don't know if there's anyone else that wants to make comments. If not, we'll move on to the next agenda item. And this one is to certificate of appreciation to Ron Culver for his service on the Personnel Board. Ron, come on up.
Ron served us for many years. Well, first of all, Ron, Ron has served the town in many capacities over the years, and we certainly hate to see him leave the service of the town, as much as I'm sure he hates to have to do that, but we will miss you. You will be missed all over town, and thank you so much for your efforts. And this is a small token of our appreciation, but it's an appreciation award from the town of Prescott Valley, presented to Ron Culver in appreciation for dedicated service on the Personnel Board, September 2013 through May 2017. And thank you Ron so much.
Ron, your comments, your experience, share your experience with us.
Thank you. Just very briefly, I'll be speaking to those fine folks standing behind me, the folks that would always have your back. I want to thank Mayor Harvey Skug, our town manager Larry Tarkowski. It's coming, sir. And this wonderful town council, these elected officials that you see facing... And this wonderful Town Council, these elected officials that you see facing you. I thank all you men and women for your insightful, well-thought-out economic decisions for this town. I thank you for your forward-looking leadership. And it's apparent that the members of this group behind me have a very great love for this community. And I thank them for that. Lastly, I was honored and humbled to be able to serve as but one volunteer on their very great team. Thank you all so much. It was a blessing. Thank you.
Okay, Ron, we have appreciated you. You've been a great asset. Now you're gonna go to Montana and do time with family, I understand? And with the hope of being back here in next 12 to 14 months? We look forward to that. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service. We really appreciate that. Oh, you gotta take a picture here first. Away from the microphone. Okay, next is comments, communication. Council, have any comments? Marty?
Sure, I'm gonna be pushing this until the event is over. For those of you that may not be aware, within the region of, within Prescott Valley, we have an agency, the Yavapai Family Advocacy Center, which helps victims of rape and sexual assault. It's the only place in Yavapai County that is allowed to do the intake on those different events. Well, we're having a fundraiser for them through an event call we call Hope Still Floats. And that's taking place on August 19th at Stone Ridge Golf Course. The theme for that night is Saturday in the Park. Tickets are $50. I'm sorry, I don't have the phone number with me, but if you go online and you go Google "Hope Still Floats," you could find it. It's gonna be a lot of fun. There's gonna be a silent auction, a live auction. It's a great fundraiser, and it serves the county and those victims of rape and sexual assault. It's a very worthwhile event. This is our third year doing it. So I just wanna put it out there, and you'll hear more about it as we get closer. Thank you.
Good. Any other comments? Larry?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, I would like to ask Brian Witty to come up to describe for us what they are planning on the evening of July 4th. I do know that one element of that celebration is the very best fireworks show in northern Arizona to be had here in Prescott Valley at Mountain Valley Park. By far, the best fireworks show.
Is there much more, is there much more else to say? I was gonna say, you topped it all, so, in doing that.
You took away, took away your seal or wind out of your seals.
Well, he took the big bang. Let's put it that way. Yeah, yeah, stole it all, so.
You know what? That's the first time I've ever seen you get stumped.
No, no. We have many other good things in store for this particular evening. We've got a ton of community partners that are involved with us this year. Our mighty Chamber and concessionaires that are out there, they'll be with us, so they'll be handling some of our adult beverages and all the other fun. They tremendously support our community in regards to getting the promotion out, so if you're not listening to this tonight, you will hear us through the airwaves, you'll see us in social media, as well as then in print coming too. In addition to the great tremendous fireworks that we have, and our Town Manager is exactly right, these are the best in northern Arizona, have a fabulous pyrotechnics team that puts up all types of fabulous works. They hand-make some of their pyrotechnics they have here with some of the colors that we do. I think last year, if you saw, you saw some, were with us, you saw some Shamrock Smiley Faces USA. I don't know how they do those incredible things, but they do it very, very well. We're kicking off all of our events starting at 3:00 PM. We have some fabulous attractions that'll be on store, compliments of our community partner Freedom Station. They will have tremendous inflatables, two giant water slides, a human gyro. Larry and I will be participating together in that, as it's a two-person activity in doing those fabulous fun things. Tons of inflatables, some crazy obstacle courses, all kinds of cool things there. They have pre-sales going on at their store. They will have them on sale on-site. The crazy fun part about all of that is they're also good for in-store visits between the 5th and the 9th of July, so you have extended value in doing all of those activities. Band performances, Five in the Wheel will be live, performances kicking off at 6:00. It is tremendously awesome band, so come out and check that out, along with our sound technician and Prescott Pro Sound will be on-site. All kinds of food, beverage, you name it, we've got it going on. Again, everything kicks off at 3:00 with all of our activities, with food, entertainment, all that kind of fun stuff, face painting. I know Commissioner Grossman, or Councilmember Grossman, you're gonna be ready to get all dolled up that particular night. I've got a special design laid out for you. All of those good things. So come out, be entertained, enjoy it, and roughly about 9:00, the fireworks activities will commence, so come out and celebrate with us. Please leave pets at home. Those fireworks put off some big booms, no glass containers, all that goodie. But parking is limited, so first come, first served for all those good things, but we've got a great lineup for you this year. Enjoying yourselves. All righty? Price of admission is free. And then jump in with those wristbands for all of those different attractions that'll be there, so. All righty? If you need more information, feel free to give us the, call at the department, 759-3090. Of course, check out the website, 'cause all of those details are definitely there for you.
Well, the Town Manager didn't take all the steam out of your sails, did he? Any other, any other comments?
Other than that, please join us out here on the Civic Center grounds, starting Thursday through Saturday. We'll have on display next week is the annual Hot Shot Memorial Display here on the grounds of the Civic Center. So again, next Thursday through Saturday. That display will be with us.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, sir.
Any other in the council? If there is no other comments there, we'll move on to the items listed on our consent agenda. These are considered to be routine by Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired on an item, it will be removed for, from this consent agenda to be considered separately. This includes the approval, approving the June 1st work study and June 8th, 2017, Council Minutes, approving the renewed contract for the paralegal services with Carol Cornell, approving Resolution Number 2001 authorizing the purchase of supplies and services from Council, approving Series 10 Beer and Wine License, Liquor License for Walgreens Arizona Drug Company located at 2880 North Center Court, Andrea Lukowicz applicant, approving the location and agent transfer of a Series 6 Liquor License for Rafter 11 LLC located at 2985 Center Court, Suite B, Jeffrey Wasslewitz applicant, approving audit reports and risk management retention schedules, then department reports, accounts payable, monthly financial report, council investment report, and approving the Mayor's vacation from June 21st to July 11th. And that's because it will exceed the 15 days. Anyone wanna pull an item? Oh, wait a minute, there's two more items. I'm sorry. Approving the right-of-way for the Arizona State Land Department for the sum of $89,655 added June 21st, 17, at 11:20 AM, and ratifying the Mayor's authorization for the Town Manager to arrange emergency repairs for the HVA vacuum net on the fourth floor of Civic Center in the amount of $19,478.36, and a transfer of required funds from the contingency account to the capital equipment under Town Code Number 30460 added June 21st, 17. And that last item, it was kind of, it was an emergency item. The air conditioner folded on the fourth floor, so that's why it had to be done real quick. That's why we have to approve it as an emergency measure. Yeah, Rick?
I'll be abstaining from the consent agenda tonight, as Item C applies to me.
Okay. Any other comments, motions, demotions, commotions? Marty?
I'll make a motion. I'm motioning to approve all items listed on the consent agenda by electronic vote.
Should we pull that one out of the break? Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, I'll make a second to that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Diane, you wanna set the vote?
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, move on to Number 10. Old Business for Action. Second reading of Ordinance Number 831, approving zoning map change, ZMC 17-001, Pronghorn Ranch, HOA. Are there any comments on that, or should we just go? I know councilors studied this one. If not, I would ask Town Clerk to read Ordinance Number 831 by title only for the second reading. Diane?
Ordinance Number 831, An Ordinance of the Mayor and the Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a Municipal Corporation of Arizona, Amending the Town Zoning Map by Changing the Zoning Classification of an Approximately 3.5 acre parcel of Tract 65, Pronghorn Ranch, Unit 12, from R1L-10 PAD Residential Single Family Limited Planned Area Development Zoning to C3 PAD with Conditions, and Providing That This Ordinance Shall Be Effective 30 Days After Its Passage and Approval According to Law.
If there is no comments, then I would ask, shall this ordinance pass? Diane, would you set the vote?
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, then we move on to New Business for Review, Comment, and/or Possible Action. Consideration of Appointing a New Vice Mayor Who Will Serve at the Pleasure of the Council. Any comments? Where's Ryan? Any comments? Larry?
The Mayor and Council recall at the work study meeting last Thursday that there was a vote taken, as we do every two years, looking to appoint a new Vice Mayor. And a vote was taken, and the vote indicated that you collectively have chosen Laura Lee Nye to serve as Vice Mayor for the next couple of years. And so that item is before you this evening.
Great. Any comments, motions?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to appoint Laura Lee Nye as the Vice Mayor for the next two years by electronic vote.
I'll second that.
Okay, wait a minute, a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you. Congratulations, Laura. And thank you, Rick, for a great service for the past two years.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And now we're going to be, consideration of appointing Donna Keller to the Personnel Board as a citizen member to a term, to a term of, with a renewal date of April 25, 2018. Any comments, Rick?
Okay, thank you. One position as citizen member. Oops, wait a minute. Make sure I've got the right one. I've got so many here. Okay, one position as citizen member on the Personnel Board became open when Ron Culver resigned, effective June 1, 2017. Mr. Culver was first appointed to the Personnel Board as a citizen board member on April 14, 2016, to fill a term with a renewal date of April 25, 2018. The Boards and Commission Selection Committee received an application from Donna Keller, the current citizen alternate board member, requesting to be considered for the citizen board member position. Myself, Councilmembers Laura Lee Nye and Mary Mallory are recommending the appointment of Donna Keller to fill the vacancy made by Ron Culver's departure with a term renewal date of April 25, 2018.
Laura, any comments?
Little did you know that so quickly...
Can you say, pull your microphone down a little bit?
It's been a whole month. Tell them of why you were willing to serve and the fact that you have been volunteers here before. Well, my background involves personnel as a supervisor or manager. My degree, my bachelor's degree is in HR. And companies I've dealt with as a consultant to, I've had to deal with their HR problems that they didn't understand. So I think I would be valued as a board member.
From what we gather, there's no doubt about it. But we'll see if the council thinks so. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll be glad to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay, great.
Okay. Motion to appoint Donna Keller to the, we're going to the full Personnel, wait a minute, to the Personnel Board as the citizen board member to fill a term with a renewal date of April 25, 2018 by electronic vote.
I can second.
Thank you. We have the motion in a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to C then. Consideration of reappointing Kathy Derry to the Library Board of Trustees to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2010. Again, Rick, any comments?
Yes, I do. On June 30, 2017, Kathy Derry's term on the Library Board of Trustees will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter, choosing to be reappointed. Ms. Derry was first appointed to a partial term on this board August 22, 2013, and this reappointment will be her third term. Myself, Councilmembers Mary Mallory, Laura Lee Nye are recommending reappointment of Kathy Derry for a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020. And I do have to comment that of every library board action since she joined the library board, this is the first time she hasn't been in attendance over all these years. So she's done a great job for us on this board, and we are certainly happy that she wants to stay on.
Any additional comments, Laura?
I think we had covered it all. I couldn't top that.
Any motions?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Great, we're ready.
Motion to reappoint Kathy Derry to the Library Board of Trustees for a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a second to motion.
Great, we have the motion in a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
That's unanimous, Mayor.
That passed, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we move on to D. Consideration of reappointing Buzz Gummer to the Parks and Recreation Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020. Rick, any comments? Greetings, Buzz. Good to see you.
Yes, I do. Welcome, Buzz. On June 30, 2017, Buzz Gummer's term on the Parks and Recreation Commission will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter, choosing to be reappointed. Mr. Gummer was first appointed to a partial term on this board November 17, 2016, and his, this reappointment will be his second term. Myself, Councilmembers Laura Lee Nye and Mary Mallory are recommending the reappointment of Buzz Gummer for a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020. And I think...
I've got a quiz for you, Buzz.
Very good.
How many times have you stood there? How many times have you stood there as an applicant for this position?
It's been a long, a lot of them, as a matter of fact. I think you guys even had to change the rules because of me, because I kept coming back.
We did have to change the rules. That's why I asked the question. And we want to humbly thank you for all of that service, and when you took the time out to take care of family, and now you're back, and it just seems so natural to see you standing there, Buzz. Humbly thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Any other comments, motions?
Mayor, I see hands back there going like this, you know, but...
Just ignore those guys back there. Just ignore those guys back there.
I would like to make a motion, though.
Yeah, and make any other comments, by the way?
Yeah, I was on the commission for so long, and I stepped off to help take care of a grandson, and I was the babysitter for, I got laid off from that. So now the, my son has got a Labrador puppy now that I'm grandpa to, so I get to still babysit some of that. But I did miss being on the commission. It's fun, it's educational to learn how the town works, and just to be a part of some changes that might help the town with our parks and things. And I appreciate all of you giving me the chance to come back and continue on with the work we're doing.
We appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Jody?
All right, then I make the motion to reappoint Buzz Gummer to the Parks and Recreation Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Good, Diane. We'll move on to E. Thank you, Buzz. We'll move on to E. Consideration of appointing Charlotte Bradford to the Library Board of Trustees to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020. Rick?
While Charlotte's on her way up...
There she is.
On June 30, 2017, Charlotte Bradford's term on the Library Board of Trustees will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Ms. Bradford was first appointed to a partial term on this board February 26, 2015, and this reappointment will be her second term. Myself, council members Mary Mallory and Laura Lee Nye are recommending the reappointment of Charlotte Bradford for a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020. Thank you. Laura?
Thank you so much, Charlotte. I have lost track of how long and how many terms you served.
Would you use a microphone now, Charlotte?
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
Second term.
Because some of them on there have really served a lot of terms.
Well, I think you can only serve three, and then you have to be off for one.
Off for one, right. So tell everybody why you want to do a second term.
Why what? I'm sorry?
Why you wanted to serve on the library board.
Oh, I just was very interested in learning more about the library, and Stuart is a neighbor of mine, and we've had talks about it, you know, and conversation here and there. And he suggested that I come to a couple of meetings, so I did. And I just, we just all have such a rapport on that board. It's like magic. And I wanted to serve, so I asked for your favor, and thank you all for that, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve another term. I appreciate it. I enjoy doing it. I love being a part of this town. It's terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
It's good people like you that make it work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mike?
I'd be more than happy, be my honor to make a motion to reappoint Charlotte Bradford to the Library Board of Trustees to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
That too is unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, move on to F. Consideration of reappointing Elaine Follman to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a, to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020. Rick?
Yes. It's my pleasure. It's coming, it's coming back to haunt you, isn't it? Okay, on June 30, 2017, Elaine Follman's term on the Park and Recreation Commission will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Thank you for that. Ms. Follman was first appointed to a full term on this board August 28, 2014, and this reappointment will be her second term. Myself, council members Mary Mallory and Laura Lee Nye are recommending reappointment of Elaine Follman for a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020. Laura?
I know you have something to share, Elaine.
I do?
You're, you do. You want to use the microphone?
She has, she's been so faithful.
I had to take a little time off for a while.
But you're back.
Yes. I would like to say, certainly, I've said this before, and Larry's heard me say this, I grew up as a city kid. I grew up in Brooklyn, the great state of New York, if you don't know where it is.
I know that place.
And parks have always meant so much to me. That it was a great way to get off the streets. And you know what? It still is. So I'm glad that we can keep our parks looking as beautiful as they do now. Any child that grows up in the city and doesn't get the aroma of freshly cut grass is missing something. So I am pleased to be on the commission again. We have a great commission, and I love it. I'm the only female on it, so what more could I want?
We sure appreciate that, Elaine.
Thank you, Elaine. And for that, I'll make a motion. Motion to appoint Elaine Follman to the Parks and Recreation Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30, 2020 by electronic vote.
Mayor, I'd like to second that.
Okay, well, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? Then we'll see if it works, Elaine.
Okay.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you again. Really appreciate the high-quality people that are supporting us in all our departments. Thank you so much.
My privilege.
Okay, now we move on to G. Public hearing. Proposed town valley expenditure limitation and budget for fiscal year 2017 and 18. Mr. Coppe, are you around? Where's Bill?
Mr. Mayor and council, if I could, you are at the finish line. This process started the first week of November in 2016, meaning the building of the budget. And you have adopted the tentative budget, and this is after you've had two retreats, a number of public meetings seeking the community input, and a number of presentations by all of the department heads. The budget that you have before you this evening is slightly in excess of $93 million for fiscal year 1718, starting July 1. Having said that, Bill Coppe is here to give you as little or as much information as you require, including the dreaded PowerPoint that you have already seen. If you feel that you would like to revisit that PowerPoint, I know he is very eager to go ahead and bring out many, many slides if you so desire, but your call.
Why are you punishing us?
Exactly. That's the point. You have witnessed various iterations of this budget, modified at your request. You have already approved the draft of this 30 days ago. And so with that in mind, this is time for the public hearing, and then the finish line is the next item if you elect to approve this year's budget. But once again, if you desire any additional information, it is here at your request.
Thank you, Larry. Any public comment from anyone? I hope that's a sign that the public has a lot of confidence in our staff and in the council. We have an outstanding staff, and we have an outstanding council that I work with. I think this is a reflection of that. If there is no further comment, then I would declare the public hearing closed, and we'll move on then to an H. Consideration of approving Resolution Number 2002, approving the federal, or fiscal year 201718 final expenditure limitation and budget for the town of Prescott Valley. Any comments, questions, motions? Anyone?
There's no other comments. I'd love to make a motion.
I think we're ready.
We've been ready. Okay, I make a motion to approve the Resolution Number 2002, adopting the fiscal year 201718 final expenditure limit and budget for the town of Prescott Valley by electronic vote.
Thank you, Marty. Second, anyone? Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I'd second the motion.
Okay. We have the motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, now we move on to I. Consideration of approving Resolution Number 2003, adopting revisions to the town personnel policies. Karen, welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I brought my personnel manual so we can go through the whole thing, or in summary, I just...
You don't have a 12-hour presentation like Mr. Coppe does?
I just, in case you ask me questions, so I have my reference materials.
I think...
But what is in front of you this evening is we have nine different policies, that the bulk of them, six out of the nine, require changes due to November 2016, changes in our Arizona state statutes with the Fair Wages and Healthy Families Act. And so this requiring now that we provide at minimum one hour paid time off for every 30 hours worked for employees, it impacted six of these nine policies that I worked with legal services and appreciate their help in drafting changes to our policies to incorporate those mandates. It has been reviewed and recommended by the Personnel Board that we adopt those changes. The other three policies, two of them, 2-11 and 2-13 in front of you, are in regards to return to work, our light duty and worker compensation policies. And the changes there were simply to incorporate some of the practices that we already do in ensuring that light duty is a temporary assignment for individuals to transition back into the workplace. And then 2-32 hasn't been updated since 2005. So we've had some changes in laser fish and electronic management of our records and so forth that, again, we just incorporated our practices into that policy draft for your consideration and change. So staff recommendation that we're just asking for your authorization and signature Resolution Number 2003 to repeal in the entirety and to reenact to incorporate these amendments as approved by the Personnel Board. Do you have any questions?
Questions, anyone? By the way, you had a good summary on that. We appreciate that. Any questions, comments, anyone? Karen, I think you're doing a super job. Just keep up the good work.
That's my plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Okay, any other comments, questions, motions, commotions, the motions?
I'll make a motion.
Ready, I think?
Motion to authorize the mayor and his assistant vice mayor to sign Resolution Number 2003, adopting revisions to town personnel policies that are recommended by the Personnel Board by electronic vote.
Second, anyone?
Mayor, I'll make a second on that.
Thank you. Diane, we have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote?
Councilmember Nye, thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we move on to J. Consideration of approving an amendment to town engineer agreement with Davin Associates in an amount not to exceed $235,710 for design services for the viewpoint drive connector improvements, mainly to round up. Norm?
Good evening, Mayor, council. We did discuss this particular item quite detail last week. Tried to give you some details on where we've been. So in short, this is the viewpoint connector design. We got 30% plans three, four years ago. We've started parts of the project with some dirt balance, but this particular item would hire Davin Associates to finish from the 30% to 100% plans in anticipation of constructing this particular project once done, hopefully next year. So funding source is a 1/3 sales tax. Of course, that goes to fund four roads. Viewpoint Drive is one of them through the 1 cent sales tax. So very much a, very well scoped project, and with the timing and the design, we look forward to moving forward to construction once the design's done. So with as much as we talked about it last week, happy to answer any questions, but that's really kind of the overview real quick.
Any questions since last week's discussion? Jody? No? Norm, I think we studied it pretty good last week. You gave a good presentation.
Good, thank you.
And we're looking forward to this project. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the amendment to the town engineer agreement with Davin Associates in an amount not to exceed $235,710 for design services for the viewpoint drive connector improvements mainly to round up, CIP Number S168.6 Design Services.
I'll second.
Second, we get the motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
Mayor, how do you wish to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to push the button. There it goes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
I think I do, huh? That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll get started on the design.
We appreciate that. Okay, we move on to K. Consideration of approving the agreement with the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce, providing financial support in amount of $113,275 for fiscal year 2017 and 2018. Any discussion? Ryan?
You guys are cruising. I expected to be here another hour. I'm pleasantly surprised. I shouldn't have said anything. Now we'll go another hour.
Yeah, just don't you spoil it for us.
I'll try to be brief. The town has had an agreement with the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce dating all the way back to 1990, so that's 27 years now. The town has what we sometimes refer to as a three-legged steel of economic development with the Chamber of Commerce being one of those legs, one of those third legs. Not a third wheel, mind you, but a third leg, so very critical in our support and promotion of the community. We are proposing an additional three-year contract. The first year would be set at 113, 250, I believe, 275. That's the same amount that was budgeted and spent the prior year, and Years Two and Three would be subject to our budget process. This is a contract for services. The chamber assists us with many events, including Prescott Valley Days, Valley of Lights, Team Up to Cleanup, and there's lots of value-added services the chamber provides to the town. I can't tell you how many times the town gets a call, that I get a call from a business saying, can you add my web address to your website, or can you promote this event for me on your Facebook page? And what we do is to say, well, we have a great Chamber of Commerce, and we refer them to Marnie and her, and her group, so they're outstanding and giving that kind of services to our business. I'm happy to answer any questions. Marnie is here, and I'm sure she would love to chat for a few minutes, and many of her board members are here as well.
Marnie or Donna, who's going to come up and do it?
Not my role.
Good. Any questions, by the way? Have to use the microphone, Marty. Marnie? Can you believe it?
She's not very comfortable in front of the microphone.
Not at all.
Kind of shy.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, I'm going to put my board members on the spot and ask them to please come down. There was not many opportunities, but they become in front of you, so I'd like you to get to know several of them that are here tonight. And then I have just a short kind of recap, and then some little bit of figures that are interesting that have happened over the past three years that have been happening in a little report, so I'll give that right now.
Never give any paperwork to an attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marnie.
Because they earned it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
For the benefit of our TV audience, I think you should introduce them.
Right, and I'd like them to introduce themselves on their business, please. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Donna Laxton, Branch Manager at Wendy's Credit Union and proud Chairwoman of the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, I'm Kevin Ray, the store manager of the Walmart, and I'm on the Board of Directors.
Good evening, I am Erin Vredeveld, Canyon Physical Therapy and Aquatic Rehab Chair-Elect.
Good evening, I am Erin Vredeveld, Canyon Physical Therapy and Aquatic Rehab Chair-Elect.
Hey, Erin.
Hello, I'm Frank Omendaris, the Chief Administrative Officer for Yavapai Regional Medical Center. Thank you.
Jim, you'll have to keep it under 20 minutes.
Yes, thank you. How you know, Jim Cabral, owner of all the Gabby's in the local area and on the Board of Directors. Thank you.
Good job, by the way.
As you see, we have a great representation of large business and then entrepreneurs and small business, and our board is reflective about that all the way across. These are the members that were able to join us today. You could kind of like maybe just, you don't have to stand up the whole time. I'll just bring you to the last page, just kind of some fun, interesting facts. You know, part of what we do is operate an official Arizona Visitor Center. Over the years, changes in the Arizona Office of Tourism have changed how they kind of watch us, but we still follow the same guidelines that they had way back in the day when there was a lot of money in the Office of Tourism, and they were coming out and, they were coming out and visiting and touring us. So we're open now, seven, five days a week from nine to five, eight to five, and then we're open Saturdays now through Memorial Day to Labor Day from 10 to 2. So that gives us some opportunity. I have a volunteer that is just amazing and comes in on Saturdays and fills in during the summertime. Our membership is now at 635. We have 11-member Board of Director, three full-time staff members, one part-time, and we have six volunteers. We call those six volunteers priceless, as anyone knows, and I heard several volunteers that serve in very commissions and capacities here for the town. I've got some statistics, go back to the earliest when we started this, this past contract, 7-1 2014 through 6-2217, just kind of an overview of the three years. I can break it out individually, but we had 6,552 visitors. We mailed out 436 relocation packets, and we did 104 ribbon cuttings for various businesses. Valley of Lights, over those years, we had 57,802 cars go through, and currently our Facebook is at 1,797 likes. A little bit of what we're looking forward to is just keeping ahead of it. Our Board of Directors had a board retreat, and as they sit around and brainstormed, they decided that this chamber should be the leading chamber, the most dynamic, aggressive, serving the local business community and communities in our businesses and our membership that is reflective of the community we live in, which is, as we hear, the fastest-growing, the youngest, and obviously the most dynamic community in Arizona. So we are challenged to bring our game because you keep upping your game, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. We value the fact that this is a contract for services and that we really respect the fact that we have work to do to represent and fulfill those requirements. So I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Questions, anyone? Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Marnie, the Office of Tourism, can you give me an update on any of the grants that they're able to offer right now? I know there were some changes.
They're having their conference in a couple of weeks, and they'll be announcing what their new grant promises is. They used to have a lot more. Most of what they do now is co-op advertising. So if you want to take out advertising in publications, Sunset Magazine, Architectural Digest, or wherever you feel your market is, they'll co-op and match advertising dollars for you. So that's pretty much where the money is. Not a lot of the ACERT grants or the things we were able to get to in the past, and definitely no Main Street money anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
I don't have any questions. I just want to go down memory lane a little bit with all of you. I want you to always remember that you earned your spurs. This is my 15th time to vote for this, and I can remember a time in the past where we had to defend what you did. And you earned your spurs many years ago because I never have to defend this, ever. And I want to congratulate you all. It's dedicated work, and you've helped make our community have a culture all its own. You've all been a part of that, and I want to acknowledge that, and I don't want to get mushy, but I just want you to be going away from here feeling appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, as someone who stops in on the Chamber office on a fairly regular basis, for those of you out there, it's not just for visitors. All of the members of the Chamber have their cards and information within the office. There is also a lot of information there that will tell you places to go hiking, visiting, tourist attractions. There's a lot of information for those of us that live here that want to do something, you know, for a day or for a weekend, and the information is there. In addition, the volunteers and staff there are so friendly that you just want to go out and make them all your best friends. So it's always a lot of fun. And if you have a business and you're not a member of the Chamber, you have no idea what you're missing, both on exposure and just the partnership that the Chamber will do for you and what it could do for your business. So it's great having you as a partner. I thoroughly enjoy all the events that you participate in. The mixers are always fun. So it's just great having a partnership with the Chamber, and your board is just immacul- I mean, they're just awesome for what they do and able to do it. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Rick?
Yeah, I want to thank you for the report that you presented tonight, as well as the quarterly reports that you provide to us, because it is very important. Laura Lee indicated that we've come to appreciate the fact that you do so much for the town and that many people have understood that and understood that process. But it's still important to remind the citizens just exactly what the Chamber does for the community, because we are using taxpayer dollars to fund that portion of the Chamber, what we do provide. And it's very important that the community knows that these are dollars that are going to fund the events that you had mentioned or that Ryan had mentioned and that are mentioned in here, that take place throughout the year, that families can attend, that these are things that people look forward to year after year after year, and you do such a wonderful job in doing these things. And they're second nature to you, they're certainly second nature to us because we write a check once a year and they're taken care of. And we truly do appreciate all the hard work. And I know the work because I've been on the Chamber Board, so I know the work that's involved, and you do a great job, guys, and keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to give my two cents worth as well. I think you represent the community in Prescott Valley, the town of Prescott Valley, very well. And I kind of think back, what would we do without the Chamber? I think we would be probably investing more funds, time, and blood, sweat, and tears in other ways if we didn't have the Chamber. Who does that for us? So we do appreciate that, and I think it's, it was very well said by Councilwoman Laura Lee, that I think you promote the culture of our community. And there's, I think, something that seems like going on every day and every hour, it's hard to say, but it is, I think, a very busy schedule, and we appreciate your support and the leadership of the board.
Thank you.
Good luck. Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the Board of Directors as well. It's a lot of hours on top of your regular jobs, and that's recognized. And all the volunteers and how you bring everybody together, Marnie, but I especially want to thank you today for your leadership, and I would be remiss if I didn't just hold you up for a moment and say that you were Woman of the Year for Prescott Area Leadership. That comes along, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good. Any other comments, questions?
All right, thank you.
Motions?
How about a motion?
Okay, we're ready?
Motion to approve the agreement with the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce by electronic vote.
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have the motion in a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
Councilmember Rooney, do you wish to vote?
I'm pushed.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
Marnie, where are you at? Congratulations. Thank you so much. Great chamber. I don't know if Frank is a little shy or what, but... The first time I've ever seen him look kind of shy, you know? Okay, well, one...
Number two.
Number 12, and that's unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone care to make any public comment? Yeah, come on up. Good to see you. Appreciate your coming.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Walton.
Going to pull the mic down just a little bit.
And I am a Prescott Valley resident, and I come here tonight with basically three questions that I find are really deep in my heart. I have been with pleasure working with a number of the people running for council in Prescott, both on the mayor level and the councilman level. And I've been asking them questions because I want to know how this is going to reflect in my city that I live in, my town that I live in. One was that Prescott has an enormous debt, and I think you all realize it. When I asked about that, I said, what is wrong? Prescott Valley doesn't have it. And they said, Pam, you are incorrect. Prescott Valley has at least $10 million in debt in the retirement fund. And I'd love to know from the council at some point, how are we addressing this as a town to make sure we don't look like Prescott, that we're not going to possibly go into bankruptcy? I want it to be a positive approach. Secondly, as I was working with a number of the councilmen or candidates for the council, I said, Prescott does not have to worry about the sober living homes. And they, you're wrong, Pam. Not only are you going to have to worry about it, you're going to have to worry about sanctuary city status. And I said, explain to me. Well, because Prescott is putting in enormous scrutinizing on these homes, these homes are moving out into the towns. They're coming into Prescott Valley. Do we have any sort of regs, any sort of way that we're going to evaluate if these homes are going to be important to us? Secondly, I read in the newspaper that two illegal aliens were defendants. They wouldn't have been here as defendants had laws been obeyed. One would be basic immigration laws. They should not have passed the border. Two would be, does our city demand e-Verify? Had e-Verify been demanded, they would not have had jobs in Prescott Valley. Thus, the crime they said was committed would not have been done. And thirdly, I am very concerned in the Prescott Valley as far as sanctuary city as to drug use. When you pass the medicinal use of marijuana, you open the gate. The council at one point said, I disagree with this, but I'm voting yes anyway. Was it financial? Did you think about the terms as you opened the gate above the slippery slope? Pardon me, isn't a part of that you're growing marijuana here? You're not growing marijuana? Well, I'm, as far as I know, when I sat at the meeting, you were proposing to grow marijuana in the Prescott Valley as Chino Valley is doing. With that, you now have advertisements on the radio that is asking us to support by buying stocks and bonds to support this. It's not going to be medicinal only, it will be recreational. It's going to grow, because if you have stocks and bonds in marijuana, you're going to want your stocks and bonds to pay off. Perhaps if you looked around at some of the cities that have it, go to Amsterdam, they have the zebra boat sitting right there in the middle of the river. That's for all of the drug users to go to at night, so they're not laying around on street corners. Our newspaper reporters, when the presidents were going out for their candidacy, reported going into various coffee houses, and they were sprawled out because they were so out of their minds, smoking pot. Going right here in the state of Arizona, go to Chinley. Chinley's largest building is a three-story detention alcohol, drug abuse. Trying to get them rehabbed, this is not adults, it's for Navajo children that are addicted to drugs and addicted to alcohol, starting with marijuana. Going right next to a couple of our states, Denver, many people don't want to go there. And I really would like to find out, as town council, are you going to be taking care, leading the format with what our own founding fathers said, virtue? To have our constitution work, we need to be a virtuous society and a virtuous leadership. And my concern is, will we have a virtuous leadership that will overcome any obstacles as financial, but look to what's important to our city, our town, that we're not going to go into debt like Prescott is? We're not going to be opening the doors to drug abuse, and we're going to watch the sober living homes very, very carefully. And I hope that in the future, we can see things like this being addressed in the newspaper, that we can find out about it. And I thank you very much for your time.
We appreciate that. Very good comments. We appreciate it. Larry, did you want to make any comments?
Okay, if I could, I'd like to respond to the questions that you have asked. Number one was PSPRS, meaning Public Safety Retirement. The town of Prescott Valley does in fact have a $10 million unfunded liability there, but we have a plan and we have a revenue stream that is dedicated to that by virtue of the fact that the mayor and council of the town of Prescott Valley increased our sales tax by half a cent a year and a half ago. And money that was dedicated or that is generated by that revenue stream are to fund two things. Number one is enhanced street repair. Two-thirds of that revenue goes to enhanced street maintenance. One-third goes to the police department. That was in year one of the, of that particular program. The growth in that revenue, okay, meaning additional sales tax that is collected over and above our baseline of year one, is being dedicated solely to public safety retirement debt reduction. We have a plan. We are reducing our debt. So when somebody says Prescott Valley does not have the problem that Prescott does, that is an absolute fact, okay? It's an order of magnitude. Do we have unfunded liability? Yes. Order of magnitude, huge difference between the two communities. And we have a plan that is paying down that unfunded liability. Second thing, sober living homes. Sober living homes have not been a problem in Prescott Valley. We have a very small number of them, and that's by virtue of the housing stock. We don't have huge homes, four, five, six-bedroom facilities, which is very common in Prescott in some of their older housing stock, which was then purchased and turned into sober living homes. City of Prescott has done a very good job of adopting regulations to go ahead and deal with that problem. It has not been a problem here. We have just a handful of such facilities in Prescott Valley. If we were to develop a problem, we have a number of possibilities in terms of passing ordinances to go ahead and regulate those particular institutions, but as of yet, we do not have the problem that City of Prescott had, but they are dealing with it well, and they should be complimented on that. I believe number three, and you may want to correct me on this, my note here is that you are concerned about illegal aliens. Is that correct? Okay, enforcement of immigration law is a federal responsibility, period. Law enforcement for criminal activity and offenses in the town of Prescott Valley, our police department does an outstanding job of going ahead and enforcing the law in the community that is our law to enforce. Once again, enforcement of immigration is a federal responsibility, not a local responsibility. We have our hands full enforcing the laws in our community, and we do an outstanding job of that. And when we are made aware of an immigration status that is not a legal occupation in the community or somebody here that is illegally, and if there has been a crime committed, they are taken to the county jail. The county jail then... The county jail then notifies the federal immigration enforcement and asks them if they want us, us, meaning Yavapai County, to hold that individual or to turn that individual loose. That is the way that it is done. The other item I have here is sanctuary cities. There has been, there was an individual here at our last council meeting accusing the town of Prescott Valley of being a sanctuary city. I don't know what in the devil, I don't, what it is is, there have been a number of social media posts that have said that Prescott Valley is a sanctuary city. That is not true, period. Just not true. Bottom line. We enforce our laws and we cooperate, we let the federal government know when there is an issue, and then they can choose to deal with it as they may. And then I, my last item, and correct me if I'm wrong, and this was marijuana, there is a state voter-approved initiative that was passed that said medical marijuana is legal in the state of Arizona, period. We have to live by the law. The law was passed in the state of Arizona. Contained within that law is the ability for somebody to set up a dispensary by law. We're not making up law, okay? And there is a dispensary on the edge of the town of Prescott Valley. There is a grow facility. There are several in the Quad City area, but there is a grow facility in the town of Prescott Valley by law. We do not have the ability to deny that. It is a matter of right by law, whether we like it or not. So with that, I hope that answers your questions.
You're welcome anytime to come to our office and discuss it further too, including myself, the council, or the town manager. Any other comments, anyone? If not, we'll move on then to the final item, which is adjournment. I know everybody hates that. Anybody care to make a motion to adjourn, or do you want to keep on?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
We have a motion, a second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second. Would you set the vote, Dan?
That's unanimous, Mayor.
That passes. Thank you, Dan.